So I'd like to call the planning board meeting of August 21st, 2025 to order. Introduce planning board members and staff to my far right, Steve Yost. Next to him, Sean Henry, Doug Cook, our vice chair, Jane Ramsden, I'm Rick Noonan, the chair. To my immediate left, Greg Catamatory, our planning director, and David Rosen. First item on the agenda this evening are A and Rs, site plan reviews and preliminary subdivision plans. Under that heading, we have our first A and R submitted by Eastern Point Field Alliance LLC, Gary Saunders, to re-divide property at 100 Eastern Point Boulevard and number nine and 19 Elm Ave. Assessors map 136, lots 19, 67, and 72. Anybody present to speak? There's anyone online that's going to represent this application, please raise your hand. So assuming members had the opportunity to review the plan. This is essentially a lot line adjustment. There are a number of easements that are being relocated. These two folks probably know each other pretty well. There's a number of pass and repass easements, as well as view easements, and the redrawing of a common line between the two, and then also creating an unbuildable lot in the upper right-hand corner. I am not certain whether that was intended to be conveyed to the larger lot on the south of a page, but it is not as, it is not being divided to create a building lot that's been labeled as such. So.
Okay, can you just use your cursor to show the lot line that's being deleted?
Cursor, so this is the lot line which. Right away, that's going to extend, there's also an old lot line here. So this property is getting larger, this property is getting, I guess, this piece in the back to be conveyed to the, to the property on the south. Lots of lines. Effectively a one for one. Yes. Are there comments or questions?
Yeah, I just wonder who Gary Saunders is versus Eric Hornstein, who's the owner of the property. And, but that's not our worry, is it?
Well, just, I could tell you who the applicant was. Oh, Gary Saunders is the, the main applicant.
Okay, that doesn't matter, even though the two other owners are different of the other two properties?
For the full membership of the LLC?
Yeah. I don't really care, I'm just.
Yeah, I didn't.
You, I wouldn't want someone to bring my property in front of the planning board and subdivide it if it didn't belong to me, them.
I mean, there are instances where, again, the, the plan would have to be reported.
Yeah.
Deeded in order for it to take effect.
Okay.
So sometimes represented.
Okay. All right, I make a motion that we approve the A and R plan submitted by Eastern Point Field Alliance, Gary Saunders, to re-divide property at 100 Eastern Point Boulevard and nine and 19 Elm Ave.
Still moved.
We have a motion by Jane Ramsden, we have a second by Doug Cook. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Unanimous vote. Next on the agenda this evening is an A and R plan submitted by Daniel Fonzie, to divide 35 Massasoia Road, assessors map 231 lot 17, at the applicant's request. This is continued to September 18th, probably 2025. 2025, that is an error. And so I'll just need a motion to continue.
Still moved.
Second.
So we have a motion by Jane Ramsden, we have a second by David Rosen, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, unanimous vote. Hey, public hearings, first one on the docket this evening is a common driveway special permit submitted by Anthony Trigalloni and Michael Fazio, care of Seaside Legal Solutions at nine and 11 Andrews Court, assessors map 237, lots 49 and 126. So I will open the public hearing. We have representation from Seaside Legal Solutions. And just state your name, and you're gonna have to, you might want to either hold the microphone or put it right, right up next to you.
Hi, for the record, my name is Aiden Church, I'm an attorney with Seaside Legal Solutions. I'm gonna just share my screen here. One second. Okay, so if you'll recall, if you'll recall, I was here in front of you a couple months ago, back in June. So we're just proposing a common driveway between nine and 11 Andrews Court. At the June meeting, the board suggested that we go back and speak with our engineer, see if we could extend the width of that driveway, which was originally proposed to be 14 feet wide, out to 16 feet, which is the board's preference for common driveways. And the board also requested information pertaining to drainage, specifically that swale that's shown on, on the left there. So we have since updated that plan and submitted that plan to the board. The, the, the new plan does show a 16-foot common driveway throughout the width until it splits. So we still will need that waiver from the requirement that it's 25 feet, but again, the board had, did not seem to be opposed to the project so long as we did extend that out to the 16 feet. And then in terms of drainage, so that was the reason why we have taken so long to come back before you guys. This out, the, the project along with the surrounding projects and the other lots were before the conservation commission for just as long as this application has been alive. So they were also interested in the, in the drainage for the, the subject properties. So our engineers submitted a stormwater report that covers all of the lots that were created pursuant to the A and R. Well, it is a bit weird because each of the individual lots does handle stormwater individually. The conservation commission, subject to, you know, DEP regulations, requested that we submit one comprehensive stormwater report. But again, each lot will handle stormwater, and the calculations have been done to show that, that the swale on the, to the, to the left of the driveway will handle the runoff from the driveway. And again, as I had mentioned in my previous presentation, this will, of course, come back before the engineering department. I think that that, the drainage report has already been sent to engineering, I believe, from the conservation commission. But it will, of course, come back before them when, when this comes up for a building permit. So I went through the legal standards in the last meeting, I don't need to belabor them here unless the board wants me to go back. But, you know, we do meet the, I do believe that we meet the special permit standard under section 1.8.3. We're just providing access for two separate lots, we're decreasing the environmental impact of a sensitive, two sensitive properties by combining the driveways. And this is without compromising traffic flow or safety. As I had mentioned, this is, as of now, a relatively little traveled back road off of Essex Ave. Obviously, as Greg had pointed out, last time I was here, the board did endorse an A and R plan that created a number of new lots that will be improved. So the traffic will increase, but it's not going to be a main, a main corridor. And cars coming in and out will be able to see each other, there's no obstruction, there won't be any obstructions and views there. And again, I had mentioned this last time, that the, to the right of the, if you're entering the common driveway, to the right of that common driveway is, is relatively level ground, and it won't be obstructed, so it can be used as a shoulder should somebody, you know, need to pull off. We also meet the GZO section 5.21, common driveway requirements. We met all the plan, the dimensional plan requirements, except for the width, as I had mentioned. The owner will enter all necessary covenants with the city that are required under, under the ordinance. And we meet all the subdivision rules and regulations, except, again, that, that 25-foot. The 25-foot width requirement, which we're requesting a waiver for, subject to section 5.2 of the rules and regulations. So we do believe that the common driveway will be in the public interest because we're reducing the number of curb cuts, reducing the negative visual impact of multiple driveways, reducing the negative environmental impact of increased pervious surface. Sorry, impervious surface. And it's not inconsistent with the subdivision control law. So that's all I have, unless the board has specific questions or wants me to go back through the legal standards in more detail than I did here. But again, I think that I went through them pretty, in a pretty detailed manner the last time that I was here.
Thank you. Questions from board members?
Is, is a waiver definitely needed, or?
Oh, there's, in the ordinance, section 3.5.5. G. Yeah, G, common driveway shall provide access to lots from the street on which the lots have their frontage. Must observe a 25-foot setback from the sideline of the lot of origin shared with a lot not served by the common driveway. I guess the, the question was, if it runs down the middle between these two, I guess it actually complies with that standard.
So we hit, we hit the setbacks on either side, the 25-foot setbacks. We just, under the, the common driveway requirements, in the, in the subdivision rules and regulations, which we are required to meet. One, again, I had, I had mentioned this in the previous meeting, but one, serving one lot is required to be at least, I believe it's 12 feet wide. So I raised the point where, how could you have a common driveway serving one lot? That's, I guess, beside the point if I'm requesting the waiver. But two to three lots require 25-foot width. So again, we do not meet that, but the board requested that we expand from 14 to 16. So we will need a waiver under that. But again, we're, we're asking for a special permit under the, the GZO, so. I, I think that that could be, you know, conditioned on a waiver, basically.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions from board members? So this is a public hearing, we do have two people in attendance this evening. If there's anybody like to speak in favor of this application, please raise your hand electronically, you will be recognized. Seeing none. Anybody like to speak against this common driveway application? Please raise your hand electronically, you will be recognized. Seeing none. So I'd like to close the public comment period. Any further discussion by board members?
No, is the applicant aware of the conditions that we're talking about here? Okay.
I mean, most of them are fairly standard. So the two things that I'll just update the board on, the, the application received, applicant received an order conditions, and part of that conservation commission review was around stormwater management. So that was also, again, as has been pointed out, related to the engineering department. And they had no further comment for the commission when they reviewed the project. So that was one of the main reasons for the suspension of the board's hearing. Additionally, the comment from the fire department, you know, typically there is a, a standard for a turnaround, which I don't think can be accommodated in this configuration. So if it doesn't satisfy the, the, the fire code requirement for access, the structures may be required to install residential sprinklers. And so there's a draft condition for your consideration around that. Again, if it, if it doesn't comply, and it's required, it's required, it's just kind of reiterated to make sure that everyone is aware. The reason for that is, is because the apparatus can't turn around at the, at the terminus of the common driveway, which is what typically occurs, understanding that these are kind of smaller lots that are a little bit constrained, and it would be difficult to configure that. Other. Right from the red. Requirements for the cadence of construction, they'll be additional. I mean, that, that's a draft motion for approval. The decision will include all the cadence of the completion of the common driveway before building permit or, or sale covenant that has to be entered, as well as as-built plan requirement.
That all makes sense to you?
Yep.
And just out of curiosity, how long is this common driveway?
I don't know the length off the top of my head, I would have to.
There's stationing on the. Yeah, it's, it's, it's 100 to the point where it splits. Yep. Great.
Betty? Okay, I have rather a long motion, so settle in. I move that the planning board approve the common driveway special permit at nine and 11 Andrews Court, as shown on the plan submitted with the application dated April 2nd, 2025, revised June 10, 2025. The board finds that the proposal meets the criteria of sections 1.8.3 and 5.2.1.5 of the Gloucester zoning ordinance, including that the common driveway will serve no more than four dwelling units located on two lots with frontage on Andrews Court. Safe entrance egress and adequate turnaround are provided. Adequate utilities will be installed in the common driveway layout. The project maintains neighborhood character, minimizes impact, and reduces impervious surface area and stormwater generation. And a recorded covenant will ensure that maintenance responsibilities, oh, sorry, will ensure shared maintenance responsibilities and confirm that the city shall not be responsible for maintenance or repair of the common driveway. In addition, there are three conditions. Recording of the required covenant and of the right-of-way agreement at the Southern Essex Registry of Deeds. Compliance with the construction standards set forth in the rules and regulations governing the subdivision of land in Gloucester. And if the fire access requirements cannot be satisfied, residential fire suppression systems will be installed to protect the dwellings served by the common driveway. And lastly, a waiver will be granted from section 3.5.5G for the 25-foot setback. Therefore, I move that the board grant the common driveway special permit for nine and 11 Andrews Court, subject to these conditions.
Mr. Chair, if I may, the waivers should be with regard to the width of the driveway, not.
Okay, sorry, there's a lot of 25-foot stuff being bandied about. Okay, but the section is correct, right? 3.5.5G, the 25-foot.
I think it's actually, and I'm sorry for the confusion, because there's two 25s. One was for the setback.
Okay.
It's, it's actually from the subdivision regulations, section 2.5.3.
Okay.
D.
Okay, section 2.5.3D.
We need to state what they allowed, what we're allowing as the width?
Yes, we're giving a waiver from 25 feet to 16 feet.
Okay, so we have a motion by Jane Ramsden, as amended. I need a second, please.
Still moved.
We have a motion by Jane Ramsden, we have a second by Doug Cook. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, anybody opposed? All right, thank you, Aiden.
Thank you.
Motion carries unanimously. Next, under public hearings this evening, in accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Law 41 and the rules and regulations governing the subdivision of land in Gloucester, the Gloucester Planning Board to consider a two-lot definitive subdivision plan filed by 20 Main LLC entitled Chisholm Court Extension at 20 Main Street, assessors map seven, and lot 94. So I'll open the public hearing. I don't know if anybody is. Okay, fantastic. So Sean, your hand is up, and you have been promoted. Far.
I was, I was joining, I, I'm not sure if you gave me the floor.
Yes, so you are, we can hear you, we can see you, you have been promoted, you can share as much as you like. Just name and association for the record, please.
Thank you, it's Sean McCormick, Davis Mom, on behalf of the applicant, 20 Main LLC. This is the, I, I think we're coming to the end of a, of a relatively long definitive plan process. In the last, I would say, four weeks, we've had some more back and forth between our engineer and the consulting engineer Weston and Sampson. I, I had a brief communication with Mr. Catamatory today. I, I think I understand that Weston, we had, we had submitted some relatively last-minute updated calculations. I think Weston and Sampson very valiantly took a look at them on, on very short notice. And, and my understanding is that the issues that were detailed in, in Weston and Sampson's August 5th comments have all been addressed at this point.
I think there's a letter to that effect, yeah. Um, yes, so as we left the last meeting, there were still some outstanding issues related to some calculations, just to confirm what, what had been shown through one analysis, but just to back up in terms of what, what it would be like leaving off-site at, at the terminus point. So additional information was provided. I did get an email response from James Pearson that all of the concerns that he had raised in the comment letter last before the board have been addressed at this point. He also commented in that, in terms of either, either support or indifference for the waiver requests, which have also been updated in his submission from Sean McCormick. That was also in the, in the, in the board's drive. So at this point, I don't think there's any outstanding issues or concerns raised by staff or the peer review consultant, and provided the board has a consideration of the waiver requests, the application can move to a decision of the board. Greg? Question at this point with the board?
I just want to say that I appreciate the definitive list of waivers. I was, been asking for that for a while, and I'm glad to see it.
So this is a public hearing. And I see that we have one person in the attendees list, Peter Ogen. He's got his hand raised, your permission to speak. I just need to have you state your name and address for the record. And if you could keep your minute, your comments under three minutes, that would be great.
Yeah, Peter Ogen and I represent the Hayes Engineering. And I don't have any further comment other than to apologize to the board. The reason the hydraulics were not responded to initially was the wrong file was sent to Weston and Sampson, for which I apologize. But the right file was sent to them immediately on finding that out, and that's why you got the corrective response. So other than that, I have nothing further, and I thank the board for their patience.
Hey, Peter, is that your comment?
That's all I have, yep.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else like to speak in favor or against this application? Okay, I'll close the public hearing comment period. Further discussion for board members? Hearing none.
Okay, I move that the planning board approve the definitive subdivision plan entitled Chisholm Court Extension, 20 Main Street, on file with the planning board and prepared by Hayes Engineering, Inc., and grant the waivers listed in the applicant's letter dated August 19, 2025, relating to drainpipe cover, pipe material, catch basin spacing, storm sewer velocity, nutrient loading report, and detention basin separation. The board finds these waivers to be in the public interest and not inconsistent with the subdivision control law. And the approval is subject to compliance with all, oh, and that approval is subjecting to compliance with all other regulations, and the posting of a performance guarantee or covenant consistent with the planning board rules and regulations.
A motion by Jane Ramsden, I need a second, please.
Still moved.
We have a second by Doug Cook. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. McCormick.
Thank you very much for the time and, and the patience and all the effort.
Thank you. Okay, we're into other business. So discussion of potential amendments to Gloucester zoning ordinance, section 5.11, inclusionary housing requirements.
Yes, so the subcommittee met and discussed how the inclusionary zoning ordinance has been working for us. And we came up with sort of three areas that we wanted to potentially amend. It turns out that, well, if everybody can recall, perhaps, that if a, if a, if there's a project of 10 units or more, the applicant is required to provide 15% affordable units. And under the current ordinance, if there is a development of six to nine units, we asked that the applicant provide at least one affordable unit or a fee in lieu of, a payment which would be a fee in lieu of, that would be equal to the three-year median of home prices, right? Yes, so we discovered that some people were avoiding this by, you know, potentially going to a five-unit subdivision to get out of having to do this. And also for the smaller projects, it seemed like the fee was onerous and also discouraging development. So we, we did a couple of things. One is we changed the requirement, we're proposing to change the requirement of, the minimum requirement of six-unit development to four. So we had thought of changing section 5.11.4 to four to nine units instead of six to nine units. And then we added a sliding scale payment system, which would hopefully burden the small developments less, but still add something meaningful to our Affordable Housing Trust and our efforts there. The other thing that we found that people were doing, or potentially doing, maybe because we didn't write the original ordinance as clearly as we could have, was they were attempting to segment, to segment their development to get out of having to provide affordable units. So we added some definitions and some language around basically just saying, you go back to the beginning of time, if this is, you know, this is, if you've got contiguous properties under one ownership, it's all one development. And then one little housekeeping issue, Mass. Housing changed their name to the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, EOHLC. So we updated that as well. So if you've had a chance to read through draft that was Greg provided to us, are all our changes, proposed changes are in red. So who has questions or comments?
I have one comment on the, on page two, the definition of proposed development site. Would you like me to read the current paragraph, I mean, as proposed in red?
How about I, I'll also share it so that folks can see.
Okay. The last part of the. Uh, the last part of the sentence, though, is, uh, where residential construction or development activity is proposed or ongoing. And I thought the where might be, uh, a little ambiguous and the, the question, does it refer to all of the contiguous parcels or does it refer to the parcel on which the new building, the new construction is happening? And if it's the former, which I ga- gather it is, please correct me if you're not, then I would suggest like a wording like, among which any rather than where, you know, among which any residential construction, or development activity proposed, to refer to all the contiguous sites. And there's a few variations on that we could work with.
Right. Yeah, so we've been reminded by, by people that they can't hear us when they watch the recordings at all unless we are right up to the microphone.
Okay.
So I'm just going to repeat what you said. You're basically suggesting, um, where we have in red at the top of the page that Greg has shared, add proposed development site. I think the last phrase says where residential construction or development activity is proposed or ongoing probably isn't clear enough. And you're suggesting replacing the word where with something like among which?
Any. Among which any residential.
Among which any? Is that what you said?
Yeah. So the among which refers to all the parcels that are contiguous.
Yep.
And any, uh, you know, obviously.
Yep.
Holds them all together.
I think that's a good suggestion. Did you have other comments? Steve?
Uh, no. Well, I do have another comment, uh, or question on the, the table that's further down.
Okay. Mike?
Not on this.
So move your mic closer.
Okay.
There you go.
Might be able to pull it. I assume if the red light was on, that would be good. Okay, thank you. Oh, I can really hear myself. So I did have a, just a question about the table further down of the payment in lieu. And just about, is there some kind of formula used for that thinking? I think I said it the last time I made a comment about it. How would a developer think about this analytically? Because, uh, uh, you know, from the sense of like, should I, I'm going to be losing, uh, potential income by making this unit, uh, affordable. How do I trade that off against a payment in lieu for any of these cases? Is there, has that been thought through or is this just kind of like, these are nice round numbers?
Well, I can speak to, um, and I can also show a graphic. I can't remember if you were at the meeting, um, the first time that I showed the scaling and the breakdown based on the current value of, um, the three-year, uh, median sale value. And, I mean, it's really, it's really just an incremental breakout, um, by, you know, with each additional unit, there's a certain amount of investment to build it potentially. Um, and then there's also, you know, a, uh, like you're saying, a decision to be made in terms, there's more value being extracted from a larger project. Um, I think it was actually done in the reverse where we were thinking, um, and, and this was something that was also discussed at the Affordable Housing Trust a couple of years back. That we're treating a six-unit project the same as a nine-unit project. And so is there some, it was kind of working back from the nine rather than, um, up from, from the smaller number of units. At the same time, um, it was one of the suggestions of, um, Counselor Benson to think about, you know, should we be, be trying to, uh, create affordable housing, um, in more projects? Have inclusion, the inclusionary ordinance apply to a larger number of projects. And, you know, as you scale down a four-unit project, that's a pretty, probably one of the lowest thresholds I can think of probably in the state. Um, so that, that, uh, payment should be commensurate with, you know, the size of that project. And then from there, it was really just that, using that twenty percent bracketing, um, a- as you get down to that four-unit project. Um, there was some discussion about going further to three units, um, which we, again, have an economic feasibility analysis that demonstrated that you could do it. Um, but we also have the caveat of, we have the multifamily overlay district and not kind of delving into, um, down to the three-family. There are also additional requirements and expenses for a three-family. So the economy was, the suggestion from the counselor was, could we go to four? Um, and this seemed like a reasonable, um, increment for that four unit.
Yes, I can, I can definitely see how this sliding scale, uh, achieves, you know, what's, what the, the motivations were behind it. It's, it's great that way. And I'm just being a little bit more analytical, saying, is there, if, if a developer was doing the math, how would they make the decision? And have we thought that through from this perspective? It's certainly scaling in the right direction and the fact that it's scaling is all, all good.
Well, we might be able to get an answer with the discretion of the chair. Mr. McCarthy would want to make a comment? Yeah. No, you're prepared. So just name, name and address for the record. You're good.
You're on.
Chris McCarthy, one sixty-six Bray Street. I, I think planning department, I think I suggested a sliding scale, knowing a couple of developers who have avoided even when it was eight, to do the eighth unit because it'd be taking money out of their pocket, uh, to get the last unit if it's in an expensive neighborhood. I, I, I like the fact, the sliding scale. But with the ninth unit, I, 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 I mean, I, I thought this way myself is I like having a nine-unit at ninety percent, even, even simpler numbers, eight units at eighty percent and so forth down. I think when you go to the fourth unit, maybe even the fifth unit, is that you're just going to get, uh, people doing much bigger, more expensive homes and keeping them, keeping them single families. I mean, it, it, it just doesn't make sense uh, to, to do, uh, to go and do, look at a, basically two duplexes next to each other. I think so, someone's going to say, I'm just going to put three lots and I'm going to put three single families. And that's, in these days, that's a million, million to a million five for, for a nice home. Uh, I, I think going down to the five or four units is going to just, it's not going to serve getting, sort of call it your middle income people. Uh, and, uh, but I, I like the sliding scale and, uh, for the pay in lieu of, and I think that that's something that's predictable. And I think it's, I think with the nine units, if you're you know, I think that if, at nine units, I think right now you're about sixteen, you're, you're about eleven percent potential profit if you go to six units and you have to give up, you have to give it, you know, give the, the amount of the in lieu payment, it's at about sixteen pers- sixteen percent. So I think it's at sixteen six, I, I think it gets, you know, you're just going to scare people into a bigger, more exclusive, more expensive lots, but I, I think it's good, but I think it just going down to four and five units just becomes a problem where you're just going to get people doing less lots and bigger homes. And I'm, I'm not sure that's where we'd like to go in Gloucester. That's all.
Wait, Chris, can you, um, can you just clarify, you're saying you think it should go down to six?
I think it's just.
Saying for five and four don't require any fee? Is that your proposal?
Definitely four because that's basically two lots. And I think that even five, if there's a, I, I mean, if, I would say if you held it at fifty percent of the in lieu payment, I think that's predictable and I think that would be fair. And six units, sixty percent of the in lieu and just go up to ninety percent. I think that's something that, uh, is easy to look at and.
So you're, you're saying like six units would be sixty percent, seven seventy, eight eighty?
For example, Greg, what is the, what is the, uh, in lieu payment? What does the mean right now? Is that?
The median is five hundred and fifty thousand.
So say five hundred thousand. So it'd be ninety percent of that for nine units, eight eighty percent. Uh, and, and then down to fifty percent, five units or two hundred and fifty thousand. It's predictable on a, and I, and I think even duplex condoms, condominiums, I, I, I think you, that's, that's still a good chunk, but I mean, I've, that's not really what I do, the five units. But I think that that's, that's the way that I would try to structure it.
So in, in your, in your thinking, are you also, um, imagining that someone would seriously consider building an affordable unit as an option among the payment in lieu? Are you, or are you simply only considering the payment in lieu as, uh, motivating not building up to that level?
I think building affordable now that, uh, between the costs of land and what it, it costs, people are pricing out traditional stick build at four hundred dollars plus per square foot. And it just to, I think the in lieu of, uh, I think is, if you ever got a fixed amount, you know, you're looking at a project, you're looking at, at, at six or seven units, you can put, you plug the figure in for the in lieu of, they're not going to give a whole unit, um, back if they can, you know, which, which if, you know, at the affordable rate, what is the affordable rate now too? The ones that would get into the, what would, what is the affordable?
You talking about ownership?
The ownership, yeah.
Um, I haven't seen one priced in about two years and a three-bedroom was around three twenty-five.
Three twenty-five, yeah. So that, that scare any developer, I think, away from doing, building something that'll cost them probably nine hundred thousand to take three hundred for it. So I think they'd like the in lieu of, but again, I think it's is you looking, people, developers, I think, looking at, at projects now, they're just going to stay away from the six and above if it's sixteen percent of their profits. Um, I, I would guess. Uh, but I think a sliding scale, it's a, it's a number that people can, on a yearly basis, can say, what is that this year?
So I, I think I'm hearing you saying that anything below, I don't know where your high range is, but anything below ten units, uh, even with the sliding scale, they're more likely to be motivated to pay in lieu.
What? The, the only ones that are in lieu are between, right now, six and nine above ten.
Yeah.
An actual, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. In that range, they'd currently be motivated wi- with this proposed scale. They'd be more motivated to, uh, to pay in lieu rather than.
Without a, without the cost of the land and, and the cost to build in the last five years has just gone bonkers. So I, yeah, I would think they'd be motivated that way. And I think you want units, it's a, you know, seventy percent of zero zero. So if you're able to, if you're able to, someone to figure and say, this is, I'm going to pay seventy percent of five hundred thousand, then it's a, you know, you, you can get that figure and you work that from the beginning and you go after the, the seven units or, you know, I think that's, and there's also on top of everything is is the risk that someone would take in purchasing land to do, you know, six through nine units. But I just think going down, it be, it becomes an issue. Um, that's all. And even at the five, I mean, if they had, if they had to lower it, the five would be the lowest that I would go, but I, I still wouldn't, you know. Um, I, I'd still not myself, you know.
Yeah.
Think that that's a great idea. I think the six is good, but I think the sliding scale and I think you get more, you'll, you'll, you'll get, right now, you'll get more with that than would presently exist because it's just two, six units becomes a risk and, and people just, I'm not going to do it. I'm going to do single families. And there's a lot more, less, less to deal with.
Thank you. That helps me understand the developer's motivation, which is really what this is about, right? As far as, and, and from the affordable housing angle, I, I think I'm hearing you saying that anything below ten, affordable housing is not going to be, uh, uh, the desirable option. And then the secondary argument is, well, the payment in lieu also needs to be something reasonable so that they won't do something like just build three large, very large units rather than something that goes into the payment in lieu range.
Yeah, no, I, I think so. And, and.
Is that all?
Yeah. Cause any, if, if any of the large projects that have been completed in the last twenty years around Gloucester, I think each one of them has gone, maybe four out of five of them have gone through bankruptcy before they were able to start, you know, selling houses or, or building out in total. So it's, you, there's a lot of risk uh, that you don't see right now. And that's what people that, you know, a lot of developers look at, you know, projects and they just say, let's keep it small, let's keep it simpler and we'll make, we'll do it more exclusive homes. And, uh, I think, you know, it's,
Yeah.
I guess, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Doug.
All right. What is the, uh, some other communities doing or your experience in other communities that are favorable for developers, you know, that you say, well, I like this city because it's, it's this or that?
The, the people and the attorneys in this town are keeping me stuck here. So I, I don't know, I, I'm, I'm actually working on a project up in, in Hampshire, but mainly I, I haven't gone outside except to do some projects in Essex, in Rockport. And, uh, I've got a lot of difficult lots I'm working on, as you've probably seen in Gloucester. But I, yeah, Greg would probably be able to know more about those out of town projects.
So what, what's your, what's your question exactly?
Just wondering what other communities are doing, you know, as far as this kind of, uh, conversation goes.
Inclusionary?
Yeah.
There's absolutely, it varies completely from town to town. Um, when we had the discussion about, um, this ordinance, um, back in twenty twenty, I think, um, twenty-two, twenty-one, I can't remember which, um, you know, choosing the number for the in lieu payment and versus having just a requirement. I think that was, that was kind of the first discussion point of whether you just have a minimum threshold and there's a requirement and that's the end of the story. Um, most ordinances have some form of alternatives, um, offsite, um, which, which kind of defeats the purpose of the inclusion. Um, and, and so I think, I recall, you know, very clearly hearing the words, well, if we're going to call this the inclusionary ordinance, we want the units built. And we started from, uh, a number that was fairly arbitrary. Um, I think at the time it was a hundred and eighty thousand or a hundred and sixty thousand. And that doesn't really, I mean, that could certainly help subsidize a project, but it certainly wouldn't build a unit. So, um, other models were looked at. Um, there are some surrounding communities that, uh, we have made it a little bit generalized by looking at the sales throughout the community. There are other communities that have very complex calculations where they've defined a catchment in a neighborhood. And if you're going to build in that neighborhood, it's based on the sales in that neighborhood. So it varies throughout the community. I think we've kind of taken out the, you know, the, the peaks and the valleys by averaging it over or finding the median over not only just, um, the entire geography, but also over a three-year period to kind of soften those spikes a little bit. Um, it, it's, we started out at four hundred and twenty thousand, I think, and we're currently at five hundred and fifty thousand based on that calculation. Um, and it was also that, um, it should be a higher number so that somebody has to think about, you know, again, the, if, if the intent of the ordinance is to, um, have the units included, that payment should be high, um, to, to essentially opt out of it. Um, but this is also in response to the, is there something that should also be, um, dealt with in terms of treating a smaller project, a six-unit project differently than a nine-unit project where, you know, I, I think as you would, uh, Chris has pointed out, you know, there's, there's only a certain amount of, uh, you know, potential return on, on the investment. And that, having that same number for a six to a nine, it's not spread over as many units. Um, so we worked backwards from where we started, uh, with having it applying to nine and then kind of came down and really, um, it's not, I don't think the, the thought is that a four-unit project is going to make a decision between making a fifty, uh, fifty-five thousand dollar contribution and building one unit in the project. But it does provide more revenue to the Affordable Housing Trust for them to then subsidize, um, units in, in projects that are probably going to either have deeper affordability or more units, um, on the whole. So there's no magic number.
No, there isn't. But now what Chris is saying is instead of a four-unit, um, uh, uh, project, they would do a single family home. Right? If this, if we, if this dug into the margin that much, right? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I think, I think that, uh, I'd look at it just doing singles. I mean, that's, uh, instead of, instead of doing, you know, two families that the condom, condom minimize. Yeah, I, I think it changes the scope and it lowers the risk. Cause it's a lot, you know, a lot of, and you probably experienced, I mean, how much things have jumped value-wise in Gloucester. And the last two houses that I sold were to a doctor and a lawyer. You know, I mean, that's, that's what you get coming in here. And it's not that, you know, some of these projects, homes, you know, they're just not, uh, we're not getting, keeping people in the middle here as, as much as we could, I think. Um, middle income people, which is still kind of a strangulation with, with where the market is now. And I think you just have less homes and they'll be a lot more expensive, I believe.
And I guess that's, you know, Greg pointed it out very clearly that, you know, the intent of this board, you know, talking about inclusionary language is that we'd like to encourage them to be built, right? And, but at the current break of three twenty-five for an affordable unit. And, but at the current break of three twenty-five for an affordable unit, you can't build it. Right, I mean, so, you know, the, we've talked about this for a long time, and, and, you know, the, you'd rather have the units built, but how do you entice somebody to build a unit, right? And the math, I don't, I don't think there's any real, you know, strong solution, right? And so if you, you, you adopt a change, which is approaching it from the correct perspective, there's still gonna be an opportunity to move aside and do two singles instead of four units.
Yeah, and that, that's what will, that's what will occur, because the market is just getting, it's just huge in Gloucester for that, you know, you, it's, the, the market's there if you do a single and do it bigger.
But you're saying that at fifty-five thousand dollars, you do two singles rather than, than two duplexes if that was the requirement?
Explain?
Well, the in lieu payment is suggested to be fifty-five thousand dollars at four units.
Which is, which is, yeah, yeah, I, I think going to the four units also just. I, I don't wanna say overreach, but I just think that it's, it's, you know, next there will be sing, there'll be single lots, that do duplex, there should be a fee for that. I think you, you, you just, I think you're closing in.
He can do that.
I, I, I knew he would say that, and I believe that. No, I, I just think that it's, you, you, you take, I think it's somewhat taking away the people's rights when you, you do that with it. If someone's got two lots, you have two kids, then all of a sudden they've gotta pay for the, you know, for, I, I don't know, I just think, I just think it's, it's a little too much. And I, again, I think five, once you go to five, you're into, you're into a, a third lot possibly, so that I think that if, if there's fifty percent of the in lieu, I think that that's, you know, I, I don't think that's killer, but I think, you know.
We're not suggesting fifty percent in lieu for five, we're only suggesting twenty.
Well, I like, I like to keep simple, but that's fine, if you want twenty, that's even better, but I just, I'm just saying, if you have a scale, you have it predictable and it's, it goes, you say, oh, you do five, then it's a, you know, what's the, it's easy, and in one minute you can get what it's gonna cost, you're talking at Greg's office, it's five hundred and fifty times twenty percent, or, yeah, I mean, it's, that's all, it's just simplification. So people, you know, can, can figure it out pretty quickly.
So this is what was presented at the subcommittee when we kind of arrived at this. So again, these are, these are the, I don't know if you can see that over there, Chris, on the screen. So again, it was, it wasn't a uniform, it was one hundred, eighty, sixty, forty, twenty, and then down to ten for the four-unit project. So the contribution for a five would be, at the current rate, a hundred and ten thousand.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that ninety, I, I just like aligning them with their, the, the units, it keeps it simple, and it's predictable, you know, it's.
If you align it with the units, you, you end up penalizing the five and six-unit projects, so.
I kinda, I, I think you, maybe you go to the, you know, five, five units being the threshold, it kind of makes sense, you know, cause it gets away from the duplex issue. It's like another range of, another scale of development, and just, and just start that out lower and to get to the hundred percent somehow, stretch it out differently. You know, instead of having to keep it, you know, twenties or whatever, just.
Oh, you can start with twenty and, I think it, I think it still works because twenty percent is, is, right, it's just a hundred thousand dollars, so.
Twenty and however you just. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And it's in twenty percent increment, so it is.
But you could, you could consistently change the percentages if you wanted, like, five years from now, say, okay, it's not working, let's shift it again or something, right?
Yeah.
And also keep in mind that this was just changed about five, four, five years ago, so it's, again, you wanna make sure you get production from what, and I'm not sure if you've gotten some, without people making mistakes, that six unit, you haven't gotten many, any, many projects in between six and nine units in the last five years, or?
Espresso's, right?
That was prior to that, that was, they went by the old, the old, uh, they went by the old inclusionary, uh, which we only strictly had a unit.
Yeah, but they started at twelve or sixteen, right, I mean, the density could have been, was the density, it was a lot, right, I mean.
Yeah, they were eight units and above, I think that, and that was the old, they had to give a unit, they couldn't, I think there was an attorney in here trying to change it.
There was a few. The most approved plan in the city, that one, so.
Oh, is there a, an economy of scale, you mentioned an eleven percent margin. I'm guessing that's not like universal regardless of how many units.
Yeah, I, I, simp, again, a lot of developers use simple math when they're looking at, at stuff, and if you look at nine, if you look at one unit, uh, one unit at the, at the threshold, nine units versus six, the percentage of, the percentage number, it goes from eleven percent, I think that's sixteen-six of the project potential profits or cost. But there might be better mathematicians than me.
Yeah, well, as we wanna be use, I'm guessing we wanna be using developer math, I mean, what, cause we wanna think about how you're motivated to build or, or not build, or build a giant house versus a number of units with respect to cutting away from your margin with the in lieu fee. Does that make any sense?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, you know, the, the request to explore this was four, but I fully recognize that that means every A and R application you see, if it has the potential, as long, I mean, which it always will, because a single family could be converted to a two. So it would be some threshold of, of kind of three, three lots or more on that end, and then, and then also with the, with a multifamily, it would be five or more. So that's something to consider. But again, I think if this, if, if the scaling and economy to smaller projects makes sense, I don't think we'd have to adjust anything, just drop off the four units. And then, and then the other language in the ordinance of changing it to five to nine.
I would agree.
That make sense to you, Chris?
Yeah, I just think, just making them, because I, I think you're paying a hundred percent at nine units. I, I, again, I just, simple math, ninety percent, and go down from there to, to the five, uh, to the six, and then of the fifth one, twenty percent, I think Jane likes the twenty percent.
I'm trying to encourage the.
Well, thank you very much for your insights, Chris, we appreciate that, it's valuable.
So what is the planning board ready to do on this? Should we make a new draft and come back or think about it some more? What, what does everybody wanna do?
Well, I mean, we definitely had some new information introduced, right? I mean, it's, it's a, it's essentially a line edit, right? And, and we're not in a, in a voting position this evening, so, you know, a new draft incorporating the testimony tonight and, you know, move forward.
Sounds good.
Thank you, Jane.
Greg, any, think that? Yeah, yep, I have a few tiny edits.
So.
Shocker, right?
How are we revising it, and?
Well, I think change four to five.
I think, Chris's point about land valuation in Gloucester now, if you're doing an A and R, you're splitting two lots that are destined to potentially be, have duplexes on them, by the time you spread out fifty-five thousand dollars among either the two lots, if they're single-family homes, or, well, actually, no, if they're single-family homes, it doesn't matter, but you spread the fifty-five out over those four potential buildings, it's, it's what, like twelve, thirteen thousand dollars per unit? Which, again, given housing costs in general, that's, that's not a lot, right, it's not, not a big impact on a per-unit basis, for even, even if we're doing it at four. That planning board perspective.
I don't know how to, I don't know how to judge that, you know what I mean? Because I'm not in the business of building houses.
But again, it goes, it's, it's not by right anymore, right, two-family by right, you have to pay for it, that's the difference.
You wouldn't have to pay for it if you're building a single-family home.
But it, it, it doesn't promote multiple houses, it promotes single houses.
Not necessarily, cause I, you know, you could do the math on what you could sell two larger homes for versus selling four duplexes. And I, and I would think the, at twelve thousand dollars a, a unit, or thirteen thousand dollars a unit, that's, that's not a disincentive to switch over to single-family homes necessarily.
I would agree on that.
Because, you know, you're making up one volume, right? I mean, there's, there's gonna be a price cap, like Chris referenced, you know, sort of million-dollar homes being sold. We're probably in a market where two duplexes are gonna sell for seven, seven hundred and fifty each, so you've still made fifty percent more money. Essentially, it was fifty percent more in sales than you would had you just built that single-family home. And absorbing the fifty-five thousand within that seems not, not too far-fetched. I, I think Greg's point is that, you know, for every A and R, you know, we, that comes before us, there's essentially an inclusionary tax on that property at four, right? So two-family by right, divide two properties, you can put a duplex on each, and, you know, so now you're, you trigger the inclusionary language, and all of a sudden you've got a tax on it, right? Effectively, right, so, you know, it's an in lieu payment, right? But the number, the, the number is low relatively speaking, but again, if you do, we do A and Rs all the time, and there's no trigger that says, oh, it's gonna cost you an extra fifty grand, right? I mean, I guess that's the, you know, the, a different perspective on the idea. Right, but I, I don't think, well, Greg could, could let us know, I mean, when does the inclusionary payment, when is the inclusionary payment triggered? Because I, I think when the land's divided, there's a potential that it could be two, two families, to keep it down to the four. But I would think that until building permits are pulled for two, two families, there's, there's no inclusionary payment due just because you create two new lots. So it's, it's not until the building plans are actually on the table that the inclusionary would actually be triggered. And I would think that would be the case even if somebody comes in and does a, a nine unit, or a nine-lot A and R. The city's not waiting for a check for one hundred percent of inclusionary until building permits are pulled and you know what is actually being created.
I, I have a question, and I haven't read how it's applied, the, but if you have a duplex and you get another lot and you wanna put a duplex on that, does one of those have to make a payment? You already have an existing house that's a duplex, and you wanted to form a and put a duplex on a lot next to it, does that mean one of those has to be an in lieu payment?
It reads the creation of.
Four units?
Yeah.
Resulting in.
Resulting in, not the creation of, but resulting in.
So any subdividing off of an existing two-family is gonna, you're, you're, you're gonna be, yeah, reaching into some for that fourth unit.
Only if they build the fourth unit, if they subdivide the property and build a single-family home, there's no, there's no payment. So payment is only triggered by building, by creating that fourth unit.
Which I think is what Chris is saying, in other words, that will disincentive, disincentivize somebody from building that fourth unit. Because if you build three, or you're just a single-family home, you won't have to pay the tax.
You want developers and people to love the city, not be angry when they wanna divide off and see that they've gotta give a hundred grand or something that, you know, that they didn't have to do.
Fifty, fifty.
Well, that five hundred could go to a million in five years, so that could be, that could be the means.
Yeah.
And I think ahead.
I know, well, it's just talking today's dollars.
And we'll be thanking that we made the change to the ordinance, so that there's some actual funding for affordable housing.
But you want people to build, and I just think, and, and aside just people, you know, a lot of developers, you know, like myself, are thick-headed, and it just don't, it gets to a point where they're like, they're just reaching a little bit too far on taking our, kind of the rights that we, we used to have ten years ago, and, and sort of squeezing it down, and it's, I mean, it happens, but it's.
I, I think to your point about, say I'm a homeowner and I have an existing two-family, and I carve that other lot off and, and sell it, I'm not getting deemed with the fifty-five, it's, if somebody comes in and builds, and actually in that instance, it, it's another builder, not the homeowner, I don't think that would trigger it, because it's not the same development, it's just, right, it wouldn't be triggered.
Not common ownership.
Yeah, so it's not, you're not gonna be hit with that, if I'm, if I'm retiring and wanna.
Do you, do you think we should, with, if someone converts from a single to a two, there should be a fee for that as well?
No, there's, it's not in here.
Not saying that.
No.
I mean, I, I think that, there's a, I think the six was a good and five, I, I think, again, I think it's, it's, uh, it, it deens, it, it doesn't incentivize people to, you know, to, I, I think it just gets difficult, you go to four units, just, it's gonna open up a can of worms of people trying to, you know, motivating them to do two families. It's not, even now, you'll notice a lot of people that build from a cost standpoint. Even the duplexes, building a duplex, I mean, you're, you're, they, they are getting more expensive to build, and then they're, they're getting sold, like on Orchard, I think that over a hu, a half of a house for one point five million, I think you're going to get more of that if you keep on restricting, you know, restricting, I just think.
But isn't that also, first of all, aren't, aren't you, that whatever that cost is, is being passed on to the consumer, right? Whatever the developer's cost is, is being passed on to the consumer, right? So it's the consumer, we may be creating market-rate housing, high-end market-rate housing, but at the same time, we are also building up the Affordable Housing Trust fund in, in posing this, right? So those costs that you're talking about, those margins that you're talking about, I understand from your perspective. But, but those costs are actually being passed on to the consumer of those units.
Correct, but then you, what you're doing is you're, you're, you're creating the very rich that move in the town and the not so, and the, I don't wanna say poor, but yeah, I would say probably the lower end of the economic scale, so you, you're not taking care of the people in the middle, you're, you're Orchard Street, that's people moving in the town, doctors, lawyers, very wealthy.
Correct, but you are building the fund, you're built, you're increasing the amount of revenue that is going into the Affordable Housing Trust.
Without a doubt.
Units that are being built are high-end units.
Yes, but you, again, you leave the center section of the market out, I believe, but that's, I think what you're doing is, I was, I was on for a couple of years Affordable Housing Trust, and, yeah, it's very, it's, it's, it's very helpful, but I think it's just, again, you're, you're, the housing stock is just gonna get higher end and higher end, it's just, that's, you're incentivizing that, cause it's not, again, more and more costs that come through, they were, that, that have almost doubled since twenty twenty, between land, I mean, twenty twenty, a lot you could get for a hundred and seventy-five, now they're over three hundred and fifty, almost four hundred, I sold two lots for four hundred on Essex Ave. It's, that's, that's what the, it's, things have just doubled, almost doubled in five years, and again, you're just gonna be, keep on feeding the upper market, and I, and I think it's, um, you know, I, I just think that you, you don't wanna encourage that, and however you can do that and just try to get middle-of-the-road homes built. Yeah, I, I think that's, you know, I don't just like building for exclusive homes.
You don't work for free?
But if I know, if I have to, I, if I have to, I will, but it's just.
No, I know.
Become the, you know, priced out, and you got two ends of the, of the spectrum, the poor and the rich, and I just think.
I guess, you know, David's point's well-taken, right? I mean, it's not, it's not reaching into your pocket necessarily, if you put forty, fifty grand on the sale price of a one point two million dollar, whatever, it's, you know, that doesn't even, it's, you know, it's, it's a refrigerator and a stove.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Appliances in someone's kitchen.
Yeah, exactly, so, well, I think we've definitely identified an area that we need to focus. Yeah, exactly. So, well, I think we've definitely identified an area that we need to focus on a little bit more closely in the next draft. And I don't know if you want to sneak in another subcommittee meeting.
This isn't really something we can discuss at a subcommittee meeting with any efficacy because we'll just come back to you with the same draft. So I think it's, we're down to one number, whether we should include four or have the minimum threshold be five. And I think the seven of us need to decide that.
And then move on? No, I'm just saying, I mean, we're sort of in a, in a other business discussion area. So we'll get a revised draft for the next meeting and then the seven of us can decide how to move on.
And thank you to the Housing Subcommittee for all your work.
Anything else, Mr. Catamatory? Okay. So I will accept the motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
You have a motion by Doug Cook and a second by Steve Yost. All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you.